The City Council Meeting for Monday, February the 22nd will be called to order at 7:04 PM. At this time, would everyone willing and able, please stand for the invocation given by Alderwoman Finlayson, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance.
Thank you. Dear Heavenly Father, I come to you thanking you and praising you for all the gifts of our great city. I ask for continued blessings for the residents and this legislative body. Dear Lord, I pray for your guidance in making laws that are just for all people, regardless of race, gender, socioeconomic status, or party affiliation. Teach us the spirit and value of cooperation and compromise so that we might create laws and programs that will make a positive difference in the lives of all of our citizens. Please give us the courage to do what is fair, right, and good. Lord, grant us the gifts of wisdom, justice, counsel, and fortitude that will result in a strong and healthy community. A community that's filled with mutual understanding, with care and concern for our neighbors, with the ability and the willingness to accept all differences as cultural and social wealth which enriches us all. This evening, I also ask for special prayers for our colleague, Alderman Pfeiffer, and his family during their time of loss. These and other blessings, I ask in your name. Amen.
(Inaudible)
Madam City Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Yes, sir. Mayor Panaliti?
Present.
Alderman Buggs?
Here.
Alderman Peon?
Present.
Alderman Finlayson?
Present.
Alderman Lippman?
Alderman Kirby?
Present.
Alderman Pfeiffer?
Alderman Arnett?
Present.
Mr. City Attorney, would you please present our first item?
(Inaudible).
Mr. Mayor, the first item on the agenda is approval of the agenda.
At this time, I would entertain a motion to approve the agenda as submitted.
(Inaudible).
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? The ayes have it. Mr. City Attorney, would you please present the next item?
Mr. Mayor, the next item are ceremonial items. There's several ceremonial items. The first one is ID 5416, a City Council Citation for the Eastport Volunteer Fire Company, state-of-the-art cardiac monitor and defibrillator in service aboard medic unit.
All right. Mr. Kirchner, Chief, if you could join me at the front? (Inaudible). You're good right there. All right. Right there. We have a City Council Citation for the Eastport Fire Company, and I'll read it as follows. It's very interesting, and I'll let Mr. Kirchner explain the details afterwards. "On behalf of the citizens of the City of Annapolis, we are pleased to confer upon you this City Council Citation in recognition of your dedication to serving the Eastport and greater Annapolis community since 1886. Your commitment to the City of Annapolis is evident as the Eastport Volunteer Fire Department in coordination with the Annapolis Fire Department. Recently purchased a cardiac monitor defibrillator called a LifePak-15 at the cost of $30,000. The device was paid for in part by donations from the Eastport Volunteer Fire Department. We applaud Al Kirchner, who has partnered with the Eastport citizens, civic groups, and businesses, increasing donations and ongoing contributions, making the Eastport Volunteer Fire Department a valued resource in the community. We honor you today, and thank you for your immense contribution to the great city, given under our hand in the great seal of the City of Annapolis, on this 22nd day of February 2016."
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, members of the council. Thank you to the Public Safety Committee and our Chair, Alderwoman Finlayson. What I want to do is say, first of all, thank you to the people that made that purchase possible, and that's the citizens of Eastport and Annapolis. This is the first year that we've asked all citizens of Annapolis, our side of the bridge, and over here, to support us, and the support was unbelievable. So this is an important step forward, and the second thing I want to say is, we could not have done any of this without the support of the Annapolis Fire Department. We have a tremendous positive working relationship with the Annapolis Fire Department. It's a model for the whole nation because we're volunteers, and normally, the career and volunteer people have friction, and we have really an enormous and productive working relationship. So thanks to them, and I did leave some, if anybody out there watching on TV land, our fund drive is still going, and we sure could use some more help. Everything's expensive. I did a flyer that went out, and it showed me holding a Tiffany box, and that's because that heart monitor is about that big, and it cost $30,000, and it would've cost more if we didn't have help from the Fire Department in getting a deal on it. So thank you very much.
(Inaudible).
$10 million. No, we, our goal is to renovate the firehouse and make our meeting room productive for the entire community so that it can be used by civic groups to support community activities. So that's a $650,000 ticket, and I'll be in the back of the room if you've got your checkbook. So thank you very much.
I just wanted to say one thing real quick. The monitors we had before were about 10 years old, so if you look at your cellphone technology, how much has changed in 10 years, imagine how much the monitor technology has also changed in 10 years. So the new monitors do a lot more than they always did. And secondly, this is a good partnership we have with the Eastport Volunteers. They buy a lot of fire apparatus. I think it's like 700,000 in the past couple of years they've purchased. That's $700,000 of tax dollars that don't have to pay for through the city funds. So it helps us a lot, keeps us going, and it's very difficult for us to function without their support, so I really appreciate all the help you give us. Thank you.
Let's give him a round of applause.
Okay, Mr. Mayor, the second ceremonial item is ID 6816, another City Council Citation for Song K. Webb, District 30, Anoronal County Board of Education.
Mr. Webb, if you could join us at the front, please? This City Council Citation is for Mr. Webb and his service on the school board. The City of Annapolis is very fortunate, as is Anoronal County, to have a number of people that serve on boards and commissions. None of them are paid, they're a lot of work, you get yelled at, so thank you for your service in that regard. So we have a citation here to honor you in recognition for the, your work that you've done. "On behalf of the citizens of the City of Annapolis, we are pleased to confer upon you this City Council Citation in recognition of being appointed to the Board of Education as District 30 Representative in July of 2010, and serving the children of the Anoronal County Public School System until February 2016. As a longtime resident of Annapolis and a father of two graduates of Annapolis High School, you have been involved in the school system for many years. We applaud you for being a member of the Parent Improvement Association and a member of Annapolis High PTA Business Advisory Board and the School Improvement Team. As a management consultant and President of Oxford Street Associates, you brought extensive knowledge in the field of healthcare, insurance, to the board along with nearly 20 years of service in both active duty and as a reservist in the United States Navy and the Navy Security Group. Tonight, we honor you and recognize your continued commitment to excellence in education, given under our hand in the great seal of the City of Annapolis, on this 22nd day of February 2016." Congratulations.
Thank you very much. (Applause). I don't have anything to say except I hope the citizens of Annapolis are pleased with what we've accomplished over the last five years. We saw the first new school open in Annapolis since the Nixon Administration. We've got the Performing Individual Arts Center. We'll soon have a charter school. Now, there's still a lot of work to be done, and I'll continue to advocate for the school system, especially our district. We still have things to do with Tyler Heights, and thank you very much. (Applause).
As the council liaison, Mr. Webb has served with us for, I guess, all part of your years. He has been a strong voice in the City of Annapolis for our students' school, so that was mentioned in the citation, but thank you for all of what I've done. Thank you.
Mr. City Attorney, would you please present the next item on the agenda?
Okay, Mr. Mayor, the third ceremonial item is another City Council Citation similar to this one. Debra T. Ritchie, Anoronal County Board of Education.
Ms. Ritchie, if you could join us at the front? Ms. Ritchie was also a member of the Anoronal County School Board, and we also serve on a nonprofit board together, so on a personal note, it's good to see you again. "On behalf of the citizens of the City of Annapolis, we are very pleased to confer upon you this City Council Citation in recognition of your dedication to the parents and students as a member of the Anoronal County Board of Education. We applaud your five-year commitment to enriching the lives of those attending the Anoronal County School District by serving on the board as well as serving as Vice President from 2013 to 2014. We acknowledge that you use this position to continue enhancing communication between the school system and the parents, making positive and lasting change. Tonight, we honor you and recognize your commitment to excellence in education, given under our hand in the great seal of the City of Annapolis, on this 22nd day of February 2016." Congratulations.
(Inaudible). (Applause).
(Inaudible) very proud, but she's been able to be working in the community on the PTA if I remember correctly. A parent and was so committed in our school system that she ended up on the school board, so thank you for your... (Inaudible) many, many, good five years on the board, but how many years? 20 years. So thank you for all of you. (Applause).
Mr. City Attorney, would you please present the next item on the agenda?
Mr. Mayor, next is the first of three civil citations. I'm sorry, City Council citations. I'm used to dealing with civil citations. Anyway, the first of three City Council citations for service during the blizzard of January 2016. The first is to the City of Annapolis Management and Information Technology employees.
All right. If they could join me at the front? Well, as we mentioned before, we had the largest snowstorm in about 100 years, and we gave citations to different departments. At the last council meeting, we wanted to recognize all the departments for the outstanding work. Most people don't realize how much goes on in between. We're sitting down in the police basement in the bunker, all the department heads are there, so if the computers aren't working, technology's not working, it's gonna mess up the snow plows and everything else that's going on. So we wanted to take the time to recognize each person and tell them how much we appreciate and value their service. "On behalf of the citizens of the City of Annapolis, we are pleased to confer upon you this City Council Citation in recognition of your dedication to the residents of Annapolis. We applaud the men and women of the Office of Management Information Technology for their detailed and thorough service during the January blizzard of 2016. Your group of experts in information technology kept city services working, the phones active, the webpage available, and the nucleus of our city in working order during the week of January 22nd through 26th, and we honor your commitment tonight. We acknowledge your dedication to the residents and businesses of Annapolis during the storm of 2016, given under our hand in the great seal of the City of Annapolis, on this 22nd day of February 2016." Congratulations. (Applause). snow plows, and they helped out in a very big way during the snowstorm, not just the trails, but other parts of the city as well. So, "On behalf of the citizens of the City of Annapolis, we are very pleased to confer upon you this City Council Citation in recognition of your dedication to the residents of Annapolis. We applaud the men and women of the Annapolis Recreation and Parks Department for creating a shelter of last resort at the Stanton Center, protecting the homeless population and responding to their needs during the January blizzard of 2016. Your group of kind and highly skilled individuals served 120 of our most valuable residents during the week of January 22nd through January 26th, and we honor your commitment tonight. We acknowledge your park maintenance crew for their dedication during the storm and working long hours in brutal conditions to ensure the park and recreation accessibility for our residents." And I'm gonna go off script here for a second and say, for those of you who don't know, and riding the cold like Iowa, shoveling off your car, or out for a couple hours and complaining about it, there's people that live out there in those conditions every single day. And there's people that wanted to have made it through the night if they thought they could just try to sleep through or to go through it, and we opened the Stanton Center, and like they said, 120 people came through, talk about life and death situations, and it doesn't happen easy, and it doesn't happen by magic. A lot of people staying up 24 hours a day making sure. So I want to thank all of you sincerely, from the bottom of my heart, for the work that goes into it. And we're very happy to give Mr. Larry Griffin, who is a family friend, a longtime Anapolican, a big community activist, a check for $5,000 for the work that you've done to help us out. That's why we didn't tell you why you were here. (Applause).
Anybody want to add to Baker? Um, thank you all for everything that you did for us, where we care, and one of the things is that anybody in this room can be homeless. It's not a game out there. I was addict myself for 28 years, but I was homeless for two years, and I know how it feels out there, but this team here, and this team that's here working here, is doing a great job, and I hope that everybody, everybody, uh-oh, everybody understand that it is a problem here, and anyplace else too, when it get cold and stuff like that. And don't be scared to talk to none of these folks or help them, or if I can give you my card and give you my number, you can call me if you find somebody that is homeless, and I can come pick them up. Thank you.
I'm Mike Morris, Director of Recreation and Parks, and I want to extend the thanks to Larry, all the work he did, and also our other staff that worked at the Stanton Center for the hours they put in, but Larry and his crew really did most of the work there, and so we thank you for that. And Andy Costello, who's our Parks Division Head, and all his park maintenance staff who cleaned all the sidewalks and parking lots and trails to all of our parks, to our recreation facilities, and got them open for business. So thank you and your crews for all they've done, and same with you Flip, for your crews and what they've done, so we appreciate it very much.
So as many of you know, the Annapolis Transportation Department was open relatively quickly after the snowstorm, and there's a lot of residents out there, and I'll take two things. There's a lot of residents that use Annapolis Transportation that don't depend on it every day, and there's some people that do. And for the people that do, Mr. Gordon did an outstanding job and his team, making sure those routes, those buses were running as quickly as possible. Make sure if people had to go to a doctor's office, if people had to go to work, people had to go to their job or visit a loved one. Those things don't end because of a snowstorm, and people that depend on it depend on the city. So on behalf of the citizens of the City of Annapolis, we are pleased to confer upon you this City Council Citation in recognition of your dedication to the residents and businesses of Annapolis. We applaud the men and women of the Annapolis Transportation Department for their commitment to keeping our fleet in service and getting our residents safely to and from work during the January blizzard of 2016. Your group of skilled drivers, supervisors, maintenance workers, all remain focused on the city and the safety of its residents, staying on the clock even when the service was not allowed due to the Level 5 snow emergency. We acknowledge your persistence and honor you tonight, given under our hand in the great seal of the City of Annapolis, on this 22nd day of February 2016.
I just want to take this opportunity to first thank you, Mr. Mayor and the City Council, for this citation, and I want to acknowledge the men and women of the Department of Transportation who, even though this was an unprecedented storm, they were out on both Saturday and Sunday, when everything else was closed, clearing the lot and making a way so that on Monday, we could operate the services that we do. They also went out and rode around to check out the routes to make sure they were clear enough so that by Monday, we were running a level of service. On Tuesday, we improved the service to a higher level, and by Wednesday, we were back in full service. So I just want to take a moment and acknowledge them, and the main thing is, with all of the snow, not one injury, not one accident. So thank you to them, and thank you all very much.
Mr. City Attorney, would you please present the next item?
Mr. Mayor, the next is a presentation entitled, "Walk Parole: A Scavenger Hunt for History."
All right. I will let our Chief of Historic Preservation, Lisa Craig, give us that presentation.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Lisa Craig, Chief of Historic Preservation, also staff to the Annapolis Heritage Commission and the HPC. I'm very proud and happy to be here today, working in partnership with Alderwoman Finlayson on the fourth, the series of brochures highlighting the heritage and architectural and cultural history of Annapolis. This is the fourth presentation I've passed out to you actually, two years ago. Alderman Peon may recognize the Village of Westonapolis was the second in the series. We have done a downtown as well as a historic district, and now we are moving on to parole and working very closely with the Community Health Center of Parole, the Greater Parole Community Association. The Historic Preservation Division is involving two of our staff, one of which is here this evening, Imani Price, who was an intern this summer and is now working with us part-time on contract. We're working with the community as well as Wrenken Parks and the Four Rivers Heritage Area to do a scavenger hunt for history once again, but this time, it's a great opportunity for us to showcase a couple of other things, like the White House Let's Move Campaign with Wrenken Parks, because on Saturday, March 19th, and Sunday, March 20th, during the Maryland Day celebrations, we will be gathering in parole, come rain or shine, and walking to 20 sites, approximately four and a quarter miles, or 9,000 steps if you're like me and you track that kind of stuff. So we have some, some great limericks we're developing, a map, we'll find out some very interesting pieces of history about parole, whether it's talking about the 80-year history of the Parole Health Center, if it's talking about Ersht Allen, the memorial there, don't know, obviously, many of you do, but some may not know, he was the first African-American Chair of the Maryland Republican Party and the first to run for statewide office in Maryland, after whom Ersht Allen Boulevard is named. So we'll find out more about him. We'll find out a little bit more about Walter S. Mills by looking at his home, principal of Parole Elementary School. He was famous for his 1939 suit against the Anoronal County Board of Education that resulted in equal pay for black principals and teachers, so another important resident and, as well as leader in the parole community, along with Charles Hoppy Adams, whose home will also be showcased. He was a beloved DJ on WANN, and nearly in that position for 40 years, working to host huge weekly events at Car Speed. So there's a number of significant locations and individuals. The last I'll finish with, because there's 20, so I'm not going to go through all of them, but Annapolis is fortunate to have schools that were funded through the Rosenwald Program, and we'll be learning more about that, not only on this tour, because we do have a parole Rosenwald School, which you'll find out more about. It's currently an apartment building, but between 1917 and 1931, Rosenwald, President Sears Roebuck and Company, working with Booker T. Washington of the Tuskegee Institute, funded a series of schools for African-American children, and they were really cutting-edge in terms of layout and design and academics during that period. But that will lead us nicely, or at least preview that tour nicely, on March 9th. So I'm gonna conclude with inviting you all to attend a special event that is being hosted at Walter Mills Parole Elementary School, March 9th. It's the second of a series of lectures we have planned in celebration of Preservation 50, 50th Anniversary of the National Historic Preservation Act, and we'll be focusing on the Rosenwald Schools' history in Anoronal County. Sherry Marsh, who is author of the Rosenwald Schools' historical report for Anoronal County, will be joining us... County, will be joining us, and the Mills Parole Elementary School PTA, to showcase that particular history in a lecture, and we'll probably hear from a lot of people who attended the Parole Rosenwald School. So I invite you all to attend those events and enjoy our celebration of the parole community during those two special events. Alderwoman?
Alderwoman Pindell Charles?
Thank you, and thank you, Ms. Craig, for all the tremendous work that you and your team have provided to the parole community. When you came to us several months ago, we all became very excited about what you want to do. Like I said, we see these places every day, but oftentimes, we really don't think about the real significance and the part they played in history. We'd like to thank Imaniya Davis, who's in the rear, your intern from University of Maryland College Park, and Amanda Gerkey, who's not here, but who has worked alongside of you all, and everyone else that has worked diligently on this, and all the team members. We really, really appreciate all your support, and we look forward to what's coming up on March the 9th, as well as the 19th. Thank you so much.
Well, I thank you, I thank you. You have a great group of people there, and they're very excited about this.
Absolutely.
So we're thrilled to work with you.
Thanks to the city.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Mr. City Attorney, would you please present our next item?
Mr. Mayor, under Reports, Petitions, Reports, and Communications, we have first the standard reports by the committees.
Is there any other person who would like to present a report? Alderwoman Lason?
Thank you. The Public Safety Committee met on February 10th here in Council Chambers. We began the process of addressing the recommendations that came to us from the Caucus of African-Americans. We talked about body cams, which, and many of these topics will need additional research and discussion and decisions to be made. Body cams, dash-mounted cameras, Honor God Protocol, the African-American Liaison, Chief of Police Appointments, the Civilian Review Board, and the APD Mission Statement Update. We will meet again on March 16th to finish those discussions, as well as to take on the other eight or 10 recommendations. Tomorrow, on Wednesday, at 10:00 a.m. in the EOC, we will have our After Action Meeting, which will evaluate the Jonas, the Blizzard of 2016. Everyone is invited, council members, if you can join us. We'll be looking at all the things that went well and things that can be improved upon, so that when we have another major blizzard, we can do even better than we did the last time. That ends my report, thank you very much.
What time is that, again?
10:00 a.m.
Alderman Pan?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The Economic Matters Committee met on February the 10th, also immediately following the Public Safety Committee meeting on that date, and we reviewed a number of items of legislation, R-0316 amended agreement for the Thomas Woods Plan Development. We agreed to recommend what is an effective settlement favorably to the council. We also gave favorable recommendations to R-0316, the lease for 142 Dock Street, the what's commonly known as the Stevens Hardware Property, also to the Spring 2017 Boat Shows, the Spring 2018 Boat Show, and the Spring 2019 Boat Show leases, all received favorable recommendations. We postponed consideration of R-3115, which was rental unit licenses. We will be meeting again on March the, I believe it's the 16th, here in chambers, at 6:30 p.m., where we will review any other, any outstanding legislation that is referred to us, along with other matters of importance. The public is invited, and I would urge the public to appear if they wish to be heard on any of the matters of legislation that we have. Thank you.
Thank you. Alderman Budge?
Yes, Mayor, and members of the council, the Transportation Committee did not meet in the interval since our last council meeting. Our next meeting is planned for the Ides of March, on the 15th, 6:30 p.m. in these chambers. I expect that we'll be taking up the transportation network fee bill and anything else that may get referred to us.
Anyone else? Alderman Kirby?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Housing, Human Welfare, Housing Community Development Committee met on February 16th, and we took up, we had our public hearing for the applicants that had applied for the Community Development Black Grant Funds in its next cycle. I think we had 10 to 11 presenters. We will be sitting down and making some decisions, Alderman Budge, myself, Ms. Wellman, about how much money's, pending monies coming out of Washington, who will get how much, and as per the asking and proposals. So that, that will probably not be at our March 15 meeting, but we will have begun the process by then. So our next meeting is March 15th, 7:30 in these chambers. Thank you.
Anyone else? I have a report to give to the public. I updated the City Council earlier. As many of you knows, the HACCA Board has been going through a number of challenges recently. We've seen so many resignations from top-level people, we've seen investigations come in, and we've seen just complete mismanagement, and it's very disappointing, not just for the board, but for the residents of Annapolis. And tonight, during, I'm introducing two names into the public record that I'm nominating to be board members of HACCA. The first is Chip Dordon, many of people know him, he ran the hospital in Maryland and Anarundel County for a very long time. The other one's Christopher Flynn, who works in the State's Attorney's Office. He's a Marine and worked in the Pentagon. Both of these individuals have substantial background, qualification, and experience, and I hope that the council can review their names and qualifications and get them approved as soon as possible. I'd just like to personally thank each of them for serving. I'll say it's been a challenge at times to find people to serve on boards and commissions. In general, when I ask someone to serve on a board, whether it's planning, alcohol, education, Wreckin' Parks, people usually say yes, they don't say no. I had been turned down more for the HACCA Board than every other board combined, and we had a lot of people that applied that didn't get picked, and I want to thank them for putting their names forward, too. We're still going to find ways to get them engaged and active in the process. Doesn't end with just being a board member, there's lots of other people that want to help and contribute. Please contact my office, we're finding other ways to help give resources to the housing authority. And that ends my report. Mr. City Attorney, would you please present the next item?
Next item, Mr. Mayor, are the routine comments from the general public that you hear at every meeting?
All right, the first three people signed up to speak are Leah Weiss, Julia Gibb, and I want to say Melissa Capuccio. If you could state your name and address for the record, please.
Push, there we go. Now can you hear me? Okay. My name is Leah Weiss, I'm at 212 South Cherry Grove Avenue, Annapolis. Okay. I'm here to talk about Bill 0716, which proposes changes to the Historic Preservation Code. This bill was presented to you as legislation to improve enforcement procedures, detail the process for demolition by neglect, and allow landmarks to be designated outside of the historic district. But it also does a lot more, and what it does, as you know, is troubling to me and many others. When I testified before this group on January 11th, I implored you not to introduce the bill into first reader, and you asked me to put my concerns into writing, and I did that in concert with my colleagues, Julia Gibb and Joe Gormly, and I hope that you've had an opportunity to read them, and if you have any questions about them, I am happy to sit down and discuss them with you and walk through the bill with you and whatever. The Planning Commission, as you probably know, discussed this bill at its February 4th meeting, and the takeaway message from that group was that the bill is significantly flawed and needs redrafting. The Planning Commission recommended that a working group of stakeholders be convened to assist in the rewrite, and it wanted to review the bill once it was redrafted. Now, I've read this bill many times over, and the more I read it, and the more I delve into the issues that it is apparently trying to address, the more puzzled and concerned I am, and so I urge you to ask the preservation staff, the Historic Preservation Staff and the Historic Preservation Commission, for detailed explanations of the specific problems that this bill is trying to solve. If we know what these specific problems are, then we can help craft a solution that can work for everyone, or at least a solution that everybody can live with. To me, what is currently proposed, I think I've said this before, is like a neutron bomb, when, in fact, a fly swatter would effectively do the job. And moreover, tonight, the council's considering a bill, O-1216, which addresses a reorganization of various departments, including the Department of Planning and Zoning and DNEP. And given the cross-jurisdictional issues that are embedded in Bill 7, O-716, I think it would make more sense to withdraw 716 and consider its issues after this reorganization. And Mr. Mayor, you recently expressed to me and my colleagues that you have an understanding that the bill has significant flaws, and you made a commitment to ensure that the problems are corrected, either by withdrawing the bill or by ensuring a stakeholder process is convened to redraft the bill, and for that, I thank you. And again, I appeal to this council and urge you to withdraw this bill. We should wait until the departmental reorganization is codified, and after that, I think it would be more appropriate to convene a comprehensive stakeholder process and a working group, and generate a new bill that addresses the Historic Preservation Commission's intended goals, and does not duly burden property owners and businesses or infringe on their rights, and keeps questionable jurisdictional issues in check. And I think that kind of bill would garner public support and could more expeditiously go through the legislative process. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good to see you again, and I can address one of the concerns you brought up. Alderman Budge and I had been talking about a working group, and he took a leadership role in his making that happen, and as we talked about it, we decided that the legislation's not going to move forward until the working group has met and gone through the changes. Part of the challenge in government is you have to come up at a starting point somewhere, so I think we've decided that, since we're both the sponsors on it, it's been introduced, we're having a public hearing on it, and then it'll pause from there until the working group can reconvene. So we've heard the citizens, we understand their concerns, and we look to address those. If you want to add anything, Alderman Budge?
Yes, and as far as the working group goes, our plan is, we collected a number of names at my town hall meeting on Thursday night, two volunteers, that's not a closed list, anyone else within the sound of my voice who would like to participate in the process, please send me an email, aldbudge@anapolis.gov, or otherwise get in touch with me, and we'll get your name into the list. We're going to work with the Director of Planning and Zoning, the mayor and I will, to select a core group and a, and then there's the wider group, and we'll all have to get together. We don't know how this is going to work yet, but we'll sort out how it works so that we can get to an effective bill that meets the needs of the community.
Okay, I think, if I may say one thing and ask one thing?
Please.
I believe that Joe Gormly did submit Julia's and my names to you in an email prior to the Ward 1 meeting.
Yes, thank you.
So I hope, I hope that's on record. And my question is, is there any time, is there a 60-day clock or anything running that the public should know about in terms of procedurally how this bill moves forward and pauses, and I don't understand that process, and I would like assistance, please.
Again, I don't have the answer for you off the top of my head, I can find out, but the one thing I would say of looking to is success is 110 Compromised Street. We took that piece of legislation, we added more public hearings, we extended it, probably stretched it out too long, if anything, over the course of a year, but it's not an issue for the City Council, so by no means is this going to be voted on in the next 30 or 45 days.
Thank you very much. Any other questions for me? Appreciate your time, thank you very much.
Good evening, my name is Julia Gibb, my address is 1835 Lynda Moore Drive, and first I want to thank Alderman Budge and the others involved in the town hall meeting last Wednesday. I thought that it was a good presentation and a pretty comprehensive coverage of the issues that have been brought up by the community. My concern, however, is, as it's been said, it's a deeply flawed bill. I don't think there are many people who've been involved in this process who would say And my main concern is, for me, I haven't really received answers as to a couple of things. The first one that I want to address is the intent that is in the bill for the HPC to regulate or not regulate public or private art. I really still don't understand what's going on there, or why it's even in the bill, as there is an Art in Public Places Commission. Again, personally, I didn't really feel like the answers to those types of questions, the intent of the bill, were very clear. I know I'm not alone in that, so, I mean, I'm sure we'll have more of a chance to address those questions, but that's one of my concerns. Another thing that I brought up at the town hall is that I have been walking around the city doing kind of an informal photographic survey of what I see, just what I see, and what a tourist to Annapolis might see around them, and what I do not see is a city overrun by dilapidated properties, and that seems to be one of the big concerns that this bill addresses, and as Leah said, it's a really big change, and I feel like it's a change that will make it a lot more difficult for property owners to stay in the city, and that will filter down to business owners as well. So I don't see how that's good for the economic health of our city. What I do see, again, you know, I walked around, this is an informal survey at this point, but my count as of last week was 11 or more chain businesses, mostly on Main Street, and 15 or more empty storefronts on Main Street and Maryland Avenue, or for lease signs, and I really think there's a question of proportion here. What's really the bigger problem, and why are we implementing these huge changes for a problem that, I don't know, I mean, so the city says there are about two problem properties, Alderman Budge asserted that there were six. I still don't really see how six possibly recalcitrant or maybe economically troubled property owners, you know, merit this kind of change. But the bigger issue to me is actually, I feel like we've been talking about these details, you know, oh, what's making it harder for homeowners, or are they going to regulate public art or not, you don't really know, but what I'm really looking at is the bill as a whole, and what bothers me is, what I'm seeing is legislation that would make owning property downtown even more difficult and expensive than it is, I already mentioned that. I feel like what this would do would weed out whatever socioeconomic diversity we do have, discourage small local business owners from owning businesses, especially on Main Street. I mean, I know, my husband and I own a business in the Third Ward, I can't imagine trying to open a business in the historic district, you know, it's just completely out of the question for us. I don't think we have the money for the lawyers that we would need to do it. And I see, again, legislation that, combined with those things, may or may not have the intent of involving a commission not qualified to make artistic judgment calls in regulating public and private art. The reason that this bothers me so much is that what I see happening on the first block of West Street, which as we've discussed is not in the Arts and Entertainment District, but is, you know, the hub of all art and entertainment activity in the city, one thing that's happened there is the community has grown, and I feel like a community is not something that you can legislate into being. You know, the community consists of artists, residents, small business owners, and I think the only reason that this has been able to develop is that they've depended on a little bit of freedom and discretion that's in the current code. So I think that this community has invited diversity- the current code. So I think that this community has invited diversity, freedom of expression. There are galleries, music events, street fairs, and I feel like people who usually wouldn't necessarily see each other in our city come together in those places and mingle and get to know each other. And I think this kind of community interdependence is indispensable for the health of a truly great city. So, is that a timeout? I just wanted to reiterate what Leah said, which was that, considering that there's this other bill being introduced that possibly could solve some of the perceived problems of these dilapidated properties, I feel like this seven sixteen should be withdrawn. I just don't really see it as a workable bill.
Thank you.
Any questions? Okay, thank you.
Hello, my name is Melissa Lauren Caputo. I'm a native Annapolis. I currently live at nine twenty-five Wind Whisper Lane. I currently work as an editor at the local magazine, What's Up Annapolis Magazine, as Community Events Editor. So I've done the research about community events and culture in our community, and I'm glad to say that I was born here, in a place that embraces visual and performing arts and all types of groups of people. Thank you for the town hall meeting, Alderman Budge. That was very helpful. And thank you for the working groups. I also have a background in transcribing legal hearings for government groups, like the Department of Labor, and I briefly worked for lobbyists. So I really commend the HPC and their intention, and everyone here in this room, because of the details you all comb over. And that is exactly what oh, seven sixteen is lacking. It contains proposed language that is very vague, that will help to inform people on the HPC that are seated in that position after the current group. And so, however well-intentioned the current commission is, and their intended use of the language, it really needs to be clearly defined, because those terms are dangerous when they're so open to interpretation. So I thank you for the working groups, and I really hope that it can be amended and clarified for us. One example I will cite is there is a list of things like paint, texture, comma, similar items, and similar items is qualified as a catch-all phrase. And so that implies that it's all encompassing, and yet it's still not specifically defined. So thank you for the time with the working groups, and I really hope we can all work together to embrace culture and art and really support the visual artists here. Jeff Huntington is the muralist, and I just would note that he is trained and an expert, and he has a mural in the U.S. Embassy of Panama, and they have embraced his talent and skill. So I hope that we can support him and other artists in the community. I also publicized the mural in the magazine, and I had to caption it "Potential Permanent Exhibit." I hope that in the future I can amend that caption and celebrate its anniversary and say that this is a permanent exhibit in the city of Annapolis. Thank you.
Thank you. Jeff Huntington is the next speaker.
Thank you. My name's Jeff Huntington. I reside at eighteen thirty-five Lyndemore Drive, Annapolis, Maryland. And we own, our, Julia and I own Ja Rule Custom Screen Printing and Fine Art on Hudson Street, near the Fitzgerald Auto Mall. We've been there for, running that business for twelve years. And I'm also an adjunct professor at the Corcoran College of Art and Design and the George Washington University in DC. And I've been showing my work worldwide for about twenty-five years. I do, as Melissa mentioned, have work in the U.S. Embassy in Panama, as well as the Philippines and the Hague in the Netherlands. I've exhibited in roughly four or five continents. So I'm a very active member of our community. In addition to teaching and running the business here in Annapolis, I work with local outreach programs, and we teach history and teach how to preserve history through the art-making process to a lot of kids in our community here, a lot of the underserved kids. And I do a lot of work with Rob Levitt and hold workshops at Ja Rule on Hudson Street. So I just want to touch on some of what Julia had already mentioned, and I missed some of what Melissa said, so I apologize if I repeat some of that. But I just wanted to bring up some of the aspects from my point of view, the artist's point of view, that goes overlooked often. And that is, a lot of people, well, first of all, I want to say that opposing this bill does not equal being anti-preservation. Actually, on the contrary, I really have a deep respect for the historic nature of our town. And you probably couldn't pay me $10,000 to paint a mural on historic brick here, that's unpainted brick, or tar lines for that matter. So, but there are other aspects to our community, and that's the thriving, vibrant art community. And I also did the thirty-seven paintings that were installed downstairs here in December and January. And by that, I just wanted to put a face to the community, the art community on that first block of West Street, which I believe must be responsible for a large part of the revenue there, the arts and entertainment. So there, we are a very living, breathing part of the community here. And so I have a lot of questions about the public art portion of the proposed bill. Another thing I want to mention is the Capital Gazette also did a poll in the summertime about the mural, and seventy percent were for it stained, twenty-nine percent were opposed to it. And so I just want to mention that because that was the public speaking their thoughts and their desires. And I think pushing this bill through without working with some of the concerned community would be undermining to a really important part of our community here. So there's a lot more I would like to say, but my thoughts are fleeting. So I'll leave it at that for now. Thank you.
Thank you. Orderwoman Finn Lason.
I just want to say it's a pleasure having you in the council chambers, and thank you for coming. I don't think we got notification of your exhibit when it was here at City Hall, so I missed it, and I suspect most of my colleagues did also. But thank you. And it truly is an honor to have you here.
Thank you. Thank you very much for all your work.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to address the council on this subject or any others? Now is your opportunity. Seeing no motion in the chambers, I declare petitions, reports, and communications closed. Mr. City Attorney, would you please present the next item?
Mr. Mayor, the next item on the agenda is GT thirteen sixteen, involving a transfer from parking operations overtime to parking operations credit card fees to cover the expense of credit card fees.
Is there a motion to approve GT thirteen sixteen?
Second.
Any discussion? Alderman?
Mr. Mayor, this was reviewed by the Finance Committee. I'll speak for our absent chairman. This is actually a pleasant problem to have, because we had so many people using their credit cards in the garage that we had to make this transfer to cover the credit card fees. So the Finance Committee recommended unanimously approval.
Any other discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? The ayes have it. Mr. City Attorney, would you please present the next item?
Next, Mr. Mayor, is a public hearing. I believe it's the first of two. This is Resolution four sixteen, public approval for the purpose of providing public approval pursuant to Section one forty-seven F of the IRS Code nineteen eighty-six, as amended in connection with the issuance and sale by the Public Finance Authority. And it has to do with St. John's College property.
Right. If you two could state your name and address for the record, please.
This is a fairly technical resolution. The college has then called the finance authority to issue up a $30 million of revenue bonds. I've found revenue bonds, city, the management of the state, the government, in order to finance-
Could you hit the button on your microphone to turn it? They can't hear you at home on TV.
Sorry about that. Don't need to start over. Anyway, the Public Finance Authority would issue these bonds as revenue bonds payable solely from payments received from St. John's College to finance improvements to both the Annapolis campus and the Santa Fe campus of the college, and to refund certain bonds issued by the city in nineteen ninety-eight and two thousand and seven, and by Santa Fe in two thousand and eleven, to, in order to achieve savings and upgrade the campuses. The reason that they have gone to this authority in Wisconsin is because they are specialists in issuing multi-state bonds and are able then to do it for both New Mexico and Maryland. It's a requirement of the Internal Revenue Code and also the Wisconsin statutes that any jurisdiction which, in which the facilities are located, has to give their approval, so that we don't have somebody out in Wisconsin issuing bonds to do something in Annapolis that you wouldn't want done. So, anyway, they, as I say, it's a fairly technical thing. The only obligation, or the only request for the city is to adopt this resolution, to give your public approval to these bonds. And alternatively, Mr. Smolinski, if you have anything to say.
Thank you for your time. We'll be using part of the money to do some much-needed deferred maintenance on the campus to make life of students and faculty much better.
Orderwoman Finn Lason?
Yes. May I ask why Wisconsin?
This particular entity was created and has developed a national specialty in doing these kinds of multi-state bonds. There are, I think there's another one out in Colorado that also competes with them, but they are basically, these guys actually came into our offices a year or two ago and made a presentation to us to say, hey, can we issue all your bonds too? But they are, that's, it's just, it's just a specialty that they do. And because they do so many of them and are well-known for issuing multi-state bonds, that's why, I guess that's why college went to them. They're underwriter request recommended.
And I would add, if we weren't able to do this, we couldn't issue City of Annapolis supported bonds for the Santa Fe campus, and New Mexico couldn't do the other. So we'd have to do it separately, doubling our cost, and so it's just a much more efficient way of doing it.
So this company is an expert in doing, for colleges who have multiple, businesses that have multiple offices throughout the country?
Yeah. It's a state authority.
Okay. You know, Wisconsin worries me, but that's a whole nother story. Thank you.
Alderman Pan?
Why do you need this resolution from us? Were you on the hook in any way?
No, no. You were, one, these bonds are not even a payment obligation of the Wisconsin Authority. But because they are intended to be exempt from federal taxation, the Internal Revenue Code requires that each jurisdiction in which any of the facilities are located, approve the issuance of the bonds, so that the Wisconsin Authority can't go issuing bonds in Annapolis without your okay.
Mr. Mayor, I noticed we're having both a public hearing and a vote on this. Is there a time sensitivity to this?
Yes. We're trying to issue the bonds this spring to get, so we can get those projects going this summer.
Because this has not been to any council committee, I must admit that I misunderstood what was happening here. I thought we were relieving ourselves of some of the two thousand and seven bonds.
You are, actually.
Well, that's what I thought, and I was saying yea. Because the last time, we also were involved with bonds for a key school, and I think that the sense of the council when we were doing these last bond issuances was we wanted to think about it some more before the next time. And I guess I still feel that way. I'm not saying there's anything wrong with this, but I am saying that I do think that we should have a firmer understanding than just this public hearing and then immediately vote on it. But I see Mr. Miller has-
Director Miller?
Yes, thank you, Bruce Miller, Finance Director, for the record. The issuances of this bond will eliminate via refinancing of conduit debt that we currently have on the city's books. And conduit debt, if you look at the city's CAFR, there is a comment in the footnote that includes this amount. By refinancing this debt, the city will no longer have that conduit debt as part of the city's financial statements.
Right.
So there is a benefit, if you will, relative to this refinancing.
Mr. Arnett?
Yes.
Have I asked Mr. Smolinski? I, it does not appear to his knowledge or to mine, I must admit I'm not intimately involved with the details of the financing, is that a delay of, I guess, what would it be? It would be three weeks, I guess, because of the leap year.
Until the next council meeting, yes.
Yeah.
No, if we could come back, we would stall things too much. It might give us a little bit of light. I would point out, though, that documents are very clear that this is not an obligation, that the city has to pay for this. No way the city don't-
As you have been, as you are aware from the key student, that is how the transactions work. But it is something which, the public approval request is to give the city an opportunity to approve. And if you're not comfortable doing that, I think there have been some delays in the process up to this point. This particular, this particular resolution was originally scheduled for a public hearing two weeks ago, but that would have required an introduction at the meeting that was canceled because of the lizard. So, but in any event, if that is the sense of the council and-
Well, it's my sense, but I would defer to my colleagues. I was thinking it might be good to refer this to finance or rules and city government, just so somebody looks at it a little closer than this brief flyby. You are our bond counsel, and we rely on you, and we've always gotten good advice, so I don't-
I don't disagree with you. Frankly, when I was looking at the, I was not here when it was introduced, and I thought it probably had been referred to.
Right. It is dense and hard to understand. So I just, my personal feeling, and again, I'll defer to my colleagues, would be that-
I think it's a major undertaking, and if you're not comfortable with it, as they said, it's not going to make a major decision within a week or two. So, promise we won't delay it too long, but I think it's worth going to finance and rules just to give a review.
We can just review it and bring it back for a vote at the next council meeting would be my recommendation.
I refer to finance and rules. Orderwoman Pindell Charles?
Yeah. Would it be appropriate also to refer to the Finance Commission Advisory Board?
Sure. Our support team as well?
Board.
They're not going to meet for another month. I don't want to delay this, because I think it is straightforward. I just want to make sure I fully understand it.
I wasn't involved when the key issue came up, so I don't know what the ramifications are, even if Mr. Sussman had, would weigh in. so I don't know what the ramifications are, and even if Mr. Sussman had, would weigh in his group.
I believe, Mr. Miller and I talked, the Key School issue was it wasn't located within the city limits. So, that's why the council decided not to take it up at that time.
Yeah, I, I'm understanding Alderman's, um, recommendation, but, um, because of the expediency and because we're not issuing the debt, what I would recommend is that as part of the Finance Committee, um, that, and the Rules Committee, that the Financial Advisory Commission would be, the members would be invited to those meetings, killing two birds with one stone, so that, um, given the college's time constraints, that we could move this forward.
Okay. Great recommendation. Thank you, Mr. Miller.
Mr. Mayor.
Alderman Budge?
Thank you. Um, Director Miller, what's the size of the conduit debt obligation that we're talking about here?
The, excuse, excuse me, Mr. Captain Budge. The, uh, the total issue by the Public Finance Authority out of Wisconsin's gonna be approximately thirty million dollars.
Uh, yeah, I, that's, that's, that's the new proposal. I'm talking about what portion of city debt is being, um, relieved by this new issue.
About sixteen million of city Annapolis debt between the nineteen ninety-eight bonds and the one series of the two thousand and seven bonds, uh, which can be advanced refunded. The other series in two thousand and seven was an advanced refunding, which is not eligible to be redeemed or advanced refunded at this time.
Okay. And then my second question, uh, gets more towards the financial aspects of this deal. Um, we have not been presented with any of the financial information regarding Saint John's, uh, regarding the college, regarding, uh, the parameters of the deal, um, yet we're being asked to approve it. Um, I certainly don't want to necessarily get into all of the fine print on that. Um, but before I say, uh, yes, sure, fine, it's something I approve of, uh, and not put our credit, but put our credibility behind the vote, um, can you give us some assurance that this is, this bond issue, is this going to go through the rating agencies? Or how is it being evaluated for its fiscal sensibility?
Yeah, we, Standard and Poor's met with us about two and a half weeks ago. We're waiting for their rating. We don't expect a change in our current rating, which is triple B, awesome. So, we expect that to be maintained with this deal.
Okay, thank you.
Anyone else? Alderman Pan?
Um, Mr. Mayor, I'm gonna be a little bit of a contrarian on this. I, I don't see what we're going to accomplish by delaying the vote. We have bond counseling here, we have somebody from Saint John's here. Um, they're gonna have to come back for rules and finance, and, I mean, if we have questions, now's the time to get it out of the way. The main thing I'm concerned with is that the city's not on the hook. I don't see how we can be affected negatively in any way from everything that I've heard. Um, I feel like I'm ready to vote tonight, I think. They've, uh, laid any of the fears and questions I've had. If there are any more questions, I say let's do it now and get it over with.
Certainly understand and respect that opinion. It'll be up to the majority of the council. I tend to lean with Alderman Arnett that another, uh, two weeks won't delay it out, and I think we can just refer to the Finance Committee. And then anyone who wishes to attend that can attend it as well.
We're, I would note, we're in the public hearing portion. The, uh, we haven't gotten to this being introduced for the vote, but I think that would be the time to talk about a delay or, um, and referral to finance.
Is there anything else?
No, thank you for your time.
Thank you. Anyone else from the public? All right. Seeing the motion, I declare the public hearing on R-oh-four-sixteen closed. Mr. City Attorney, would you please present the next item?
Mr. Mayor, the next item on the agenda on, on your public hearings is O-eleven-sixteen. Um, it's for the purpose of imposing an assessment, assessment on a trans, any transportation network service company for trips that originate in the city limits in accordance with the Public Utilities Article of the State Code, Section ten dash four oh six.
Nobody was signed up to speak on this legislation. If you'd like to address the council, now is your opportunity. Seeing no motion in the chambers, I declare the public hearing on O-eleven-sixteen closed. Mr. City Attorney, would you please present the next item on the agenda?
Um, Mr. Mayor, under legislative action, we have several second readers. The first one is an ordinance, O-one dash sixteen, which is an amendment to the Maritime, Annapolis Maritime Museum lease for the purpose of approving, approving the amendment to the lease for certain city-owned property where the Annapolis Maritime Museum is located and matters generally relating to the lease.
Is there a motion to adopt O-oh-one-sixteen on second reader?
So moved.
Is there any discussion? Yes.
Um, and I'm not, I'm sorry, I'm losing her name. The young lady that's in charge of the Maritime Museum. I believe we had a question earlier today concerning the, the lease contract, uh, and we were supposed to get some additional information concerning that. And what is your name? I'm sorry.
I'm Alice, but I'm in fact...
Yes, ma'am. Thank you so much. Yes, absolutely.
Thank you.
So am I.
Yes. Both Mr. Arnett and myself went back and checked the leases just to check on the remedies that would be available. Since the rent would be forgiven, you wanted to make sure, ensure that there was some recourse for the city if we, um, were to default on our rent. Um, in fact, there is in the original lease, and again, we're just looking at an amendment now that allows for, um, non-monetary default. So, for anything in the lease, in, in the lease that finds us in default, there's a non-monetary default if we, um, should not perform any of the terms or conditions. In addition, the amendment has more teeth in it, so to speak. The amendment allows us to, allows the city to come in and inspect the premises with notification to us and make sure that we are being good stewards of the property and maintaining it. In the event that we are not, the city will ask us to repair or make, um, improvements as they dictate. And if we don't, they can do it and bill us. So, that's the amendment, which is actually stronger than the original lease. But there's really two, two recourses for the city in the event that we don't, um, perform as the good stewards that we've had, have over the years.
Mr. Andrews, are you satisfied with, um, the information that we received? Mr. Andrews? Are you satisfied with the information that we have received concerning that lease that we had earlier today?
Yes, that answers the question we had earlier.
Well, thank you.
And I verified that that is the case as well.
Thank you very much. Thank you, Ms. Alice.
Thank you.
Any other discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? The ayes have it. Is there a motion to adopt O-zero-one-sixteen on third reader?
So moved.
Second.
Madam City Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Mayor, panel ladies?
Aye.
Alderman Budge?
Aye.
Alderman Panell Charles?
Aye.
Alderman Finlayson?
Aye.
Alderman Kirby?
Aye.
Alderman Arnett?
Aye.
The ayes have it. Mr. City Attorney, would you please present the next item?
Excuse me, Mr. Mayor, um, the next item on per second reader is a Resolution, uh, zero-three-sixteen. Um, it's to amend a right-of-way agreement, uh, pertaining to the Thomas Woods Plan Development regarding privatization of street rights-of-way in that plan development.
Is there a motion to adopt R-oh-three-sixteen on second reader?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Madam City Clerk, would you please call the rolls?
Yes, sir. Mayor, panel ladies?
Aye.
Alderman Budge?
Aye.
Alderman Panell Charles?
Aye.
Alderman Finlayson?
Aye.
Alderman Kirby?
Aye.
Alderman Arnett?
Aye. The ayes have it. Mr. City Attorney, would you please present the next item on the agenda?
Mr. Mayor, next item on the agenda is the corresponding, um, ordinance, I'm sorry, resolution to the one that was heard on the public hearing earlier, regarding the provision of public approval support for Section one forty-seven F of the IRS Code of nineteen eighty-six as amended in connection with the issuance and sale by the Public Finance Authority, um, regarding the, under the Wisconsin statutes regarding the Saint John's College project.
All right. With the new information we've learned and the in-depth detail, I would entertain a motion to postpone R-oh-four-sixteen until the next council meeting.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion?
Can we refer to the Finance Committee?
And I refer to the Finance Committee.
Thank you.
And I believe Rules?
And Rules.
And, and...
And Rules as well.
And invite the Finance Advisory Committee to attend.
Rules, um, in the interest of not delaying this, I won't be here for the next Rules Committee. I'll be in Miami. So, you two wanna do it at Rules, that's fine.
When's the next Rules Committee, Mr. Arnett?
It's March eighth. That's why I didn't give a report, because we have to decide.
When's the next Finance Committee meeting?
Yeah, it's, we have it twice a month, so it's coming up.
Could we have a concurrently-run meeting?
Sure, that would be great.
I'm looking at the city clerk, because she tells us whether we can or not.
What date is the Finance Committee meeting?
Sixteen.
Leave it to the discretion of the chairs of those two committees.
Okay. Thank you.
Chair Finance isn't here tonight. We would meet, uh...
Finance Committee is Tuesday the first.
I certainly would support it every night.
All right.
If there are two out of three votes, I'm the chairman of the year. I think it's as good as we can do.
All right. It's over, darling.
Well...
What time is that meeting, Mr. Arnett? Thank you.
It'd be all for stuffing as much in the Rules Committee as we can, knowing that's not gonna be there. Come on. It's a golden opportunity.
Well, if there's, if there's no other discussion...
Madam Clerk, can we arrange to have those meetings concurrently on Tuesday? Thank you.
All in favor of postponement till the next council meeting, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? The ayes have it. Mr. City Attorney, would you please present the next item on the agenda?
Mr. Mayor, uh, next is, um, is a series of first readers. The first one is a charter amendment, one dash sixteen, regarding, uh, departmental reorganization, and it would amend the Annapolis City Charter by dissolving the Department of Human Resources, Department of Neighborhood and Environmental Programs, and it would reassign certain duties and grant certain authority to the Department of Finance, Department of Planning and Zoning, Department of Public Works, and the City Manager.
Is there a motion to adopt C.A. one dash sixteen on first reader?
So moved.
Is there a second? Any discussion?
Yes.
Please.
Um, Mr. Mayor, I believe, uh, that this legislation discriminates against women. On previous councils, we have, during previous administrations, we made, um, a dedicated effort to make sure the women in the city employ were treated equally to men. We changed the salary scale and the level of responsibilities. And this legislation takes us backwards. Actually, I believe it probably puts back in place a glass ceiling, and it probably lowers it. Um, so I would oppose this legislation. I will not oppose it. I will abstain from voting, because we always give a courtesy on first reader to allow discussion. But in good conscience, I can't support it on first reader even. Um, but I will look forward to the debate that will follow, because while it's discriminatory against women, it's also wrought with many other problems. So, um, for that reason, I will look forward to the debate and abstain from voting.
Just gonna have to go out there and say this, wasn't intending to get into the debate this deep tonight, but I'm actually appalled that you would make those comments and take such a cheap shot because you're opposed to reorganization.
Because of what? I'm sorry?
Because you're opposed to reorganization and structuring and streamlining a city government.
Mr. Mayor, you don't speak for me.
Okay.
And I expressed my concern about the discrimination against women in this legislation.
I would say...
Okay, so you can, I'm sorry if you took it as an offense, but I too took it that way.
How could you not, how could I not take it as an offense when you say this legislation is discriminatory against women?
Because it is, and we will demonstrate that.
Eliminates the Department of Neighborhood and Environmental Programs, which I will say, being on the mayor and municipal league, there's a hundred and fifty-seven cities, none have them. There just happened to be a woman that was serving in that position. Regardless if it was a man or a woman, that department would have been eliminated, as I announced many, a very long time ago.
You really wanna debate it now? We may.
I do not. I just wanted to make that comment.
First of all, and I will, I will demonstrate exactly what municipalities have such an organization as the one that you're proposing, and how they compare to us in size and services. So, we can look at a cursory examination, but we need to look deeper. And it just so happens that the two departments that are being impacted are departments led by women.
I would say there's...
Now, you can construe that and tell the story in any way you'd like to, but the facts remain.
Okay. The facts are this reorganization, which I happen to have a copy of, affects far more than two departments.
All one hundred and forty-four pages of it.
And I would say we can save the debate for another day, but it affects far more than two departments. So, without any other discussion, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? The ayes have it. I refer...
Uh, abstention, please?
Abstention? Anybody wish to abstain?
Yes.
A lone vote, yes. I refer it to the Rules and City Government Committee. Mr. City Attorney, would you please present the next item? Alderman Kirby?
Yeah, before we move from there, I, I, I'm gonna need a hard copy of that.
You can have this one.
Okay. Yeah, it's...
Thank you. You'll have it read by tomorrow?
Absolutely not. I mean, that's, that's exactly why I want a hard copy. I don't stare into this machine for that number of hours. But this is, it's a lot of work to, to even... I, I almost joined the Alderman in his standing, because I just don't know enough about the reorganization and, and what's, what's contained in these hundred and forty-four pages. But we certainly did talk about it. It was a lunchtime issue. It's been an issue ever since the reorg has come into play. So, I just look forward to knocking down, seeing what we have. I think there's gonna be some, some, uh, live...
Alderman Pindell Charles?
...conversation regarding this reorganization.
Yes. I too have some concerns, and I have, uh, submitted my questions to, um, Mr. Andrews, our City Manager. Um, anytime you go through a reorganization and anytime it affects people's livelihoods, it's, it's a, it's a big deal. Um, and I too am concerned about the, the impact of the two departments that Alderman Finlayson has indicated. Although I did vote to, 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 uh, go and let it go through first reader, I am too concerned, and, and, and I think I've been very consistent on this, on this city council, that I'm always concerned about, um, jobs, um, uh, positions, and, um, those types of things that go on in our city government. I think we have an exceptional staff, which we have shown here tonight by the people who have, uh, helped us doing, especially doing the Blizzard. And so, I'm very cognizant and very keen on our staff and how it affects the people. I'm also concerned about, uh, people and who they respond to, who does their evaluations, and this is no secret. Everybody in this audience, on this dais knows what, uh, I mean. And I've discussed this at length with Mr. Andrews as well. And so, um, I, I come from a, from a very, um, human resources bent from my past experiences, so I'm always cognizant, and, and I wanna pay particular attention, especially to something that's really disimportant when you're talking about people's lives and livelihood. It, it, it means a lot. And, and as I, as I've said, and, and as we all here know, we live in these communities. We have to answer the tough questions. Uh, we have to be concerned about, um, the people who have elected us, and so, um, as well as our city employees. And so, I'm, I'm concerned about the legislation as well.
Thank you. Mr. City Attorney?
Next, uh, first reader, Mr. Mayor, is, um, the corresponding ordinance on reorganization for the purp- for the purpose of dissolving human resources and Department of Neighborhood and Environmental Services, both those departments, creating the Office of Environmental Policy, reassigning certain duties, granting certain authority to the Department of Finance, Planning and Zoning, Public Works, and also the City Manager in all matters generally related to departmental reorganization.
Is there a motion to adopt O-1216 on first reader?
So moved.
Is there a second? Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? There's abstaining?
Answer.
I refer O-1216 on first reader to the Rules and City Government Committee. Mr. City Attorney?
We don't want it.
Yes, we do.
Alderman Budge?
Yes. Under the city code, the, an ordinance that amends various titles needs to be referred to specific committees. Unlike the charter, which is only referred to the Rules Committee, if you amend Title VI, the ordinance says the Finance Committee shall review all proposed amendments to Title VI, and so on through all of the titles in the committee.
I'd be questioning the Department of Finance Committee.
By, and by my reckoning, this also needs to be referred to Finance, Economic Matters, Housing and Human Welfare, Environmental Matters, and Transportation.
I will check with the City Attorney to make sure, and if that is the case, I will certainly refer him to this.
Thank you.
Thank you for bringing it.
As you should say, it's not a preference.
Mr. City Attorney, would you please present the next item?
Mr. Mayor, next item is a Resolution 5-16 regarding a new park to be called Charlie Park. The legislation, or the resolution is for the purpose of designating the end of Charlie Street in Westonapolis as a public park, the eastern end of Charlie Street, and matters relating generally to the park.
Is there a motion to adopt CA-1-16 on first reader?
C, maybe.
Or CA-
No, Resolution.
R-516.
Yes, R-516.
So moved.
Is there a second? Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? The ayes have it. Mr. City Attorney, would you please present the next item?
Mr. Mayor, there's another resolution on first reader.
Before we go, I refer R-0516 on first reader to the Transportation Committee and the Environmental Matters Committee.
Okay. All right, so continuing on with the agenda, the next item of first readers is Resolution 6-16, having to do with the filing of a grant application with the Maryland Transit Administration, which would authorize the filing, so the resolution would authorize the filing of the application for certain grants under the Federal Transit Act. The total amount of those grants is in excess of $2 million, and they are itemized within the resolution.
Is there a motion to adopt R-0616 on first reader?
So moved.
Any discussion? I refer, or all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? The ayes have it. I refer R-0616 on first reader to the Finance Committee, Transportation Committee, and the Transportation Board. Alderman Budge?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I see Director Gordon is here in the room, and I'm curious, is there a deadline by which the council needs to turn this around to get it to MTA on time?
Thank you, Alderman. We've probably surpassed the deadline for it already, so I would just have to say as quickly as we can get it through, that would be fine.
Okay, thank you.
Should we suspend the rules?
Yeah, I was going to, I was going to recommend the same thing, Alderman Arnett.
Certainly entertain a motion.
I move that we suspend the rules regarding this piece of legislation.
Second.
All in favor, do you have to do a roll call, or do you say aye? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? The ayes have it, to suspend the rules. Is there a motion to adopt R-0616 on second reader?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Roll, Madam City Clerk, please call the roll.
Mayor, panel ladies?
Aye.
Alderman Budge?
Aye.
Alderman Payam?
Aye.
Alderwoman Finlayson?
Aye.
Alderman Kirby?
Aye.
Alderman Arnett?
Aye. Sorry to be so slow.
Thank you. Mr. City Attorney, would you please present the next item on the agenda?
Mr. Mayor, the last item on the agenda, ID 7916, which are the annual reports of the various boards and commissions for FY 15.
And those are available to the council and the public as well, for anyone who would like them.
They're electronically, they're part of your pack, and all you have to do is tap on it, and it'll come open, and you can see all of it before.
Does anyone have anything else for the good of the order? Please, Alderman Kirby.
Yeah, thank you. I, I just want to ask, just, because just before I got here, one of these parking enforcement folks called me again. So since our work session, where are we with contracts and those types of things? Where are we with contracts and, with SP Plus, I guess? Those issues of retaining employment, whether our, our people were going to sign over to SP Plus, or are we retaining some of our employees and leasing them over? And then there were some radio issues that had to be rectified with ATD, and I guess there was another safety-
Uniforms?
Uniforms, yeah. Where, where are we with any of those stuff?
Alderman, we gave the employees up till this coming Friday to make a decision.
Okay, okay.
So they'll, they'll start deliberating.
That's, that's fine.
We have yet to execute the contract with SP Plus. There's going to be a slight amendment to the contract based on Alderwoman Pindell Charles' suggestion at the work session that they give quarterly reports to the council, so we're amending the contract to that regard. It was just approved language about three hours ago, so that will, that will be forthcoming. But with respect to the employees, they have until Friday to decide.
Okay, okay. Thanks.
There's nothing else for the good of the order? I would entertain a motion to adjourn?
I move that we adjourn.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? The ayes have it.